Good evening. The City of Riverbank Regular City Council and Local Redevelopment Authority Board Meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The time is six P M. Please stand.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, will never give justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Right. Father God, we just come before you this evening, Lord, with grateful hearts. We're so thankful for our great city of Riverbank. Lord, we are thankful that we get to come into these chambers tonight, Lord, with our great leadership and the city council. Father, a time where we could share our concerns and lift up our opinions about certain issues in business and know that Godfather, that it's falling on the ears of the ones that, Lord, have Riverbank in their best interest. I just pray that, Lord, at the end of business tonight, that, Lord, we would continue to do our part in living and being about your business in this great community. Father Lord, we honor and thank God for our Hispanic heritage in Riverbank. And I pray, Father, that you bless them and continue to open up doors for them in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please be seated. All right, now I have a disclaimer. This meeting will be held in accordance with the California Government Code, Section five nine four five three subdivision echo of the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code five four nine five zero at SEC, the Federal Americans with Disabilities. While this meeting is being physically open to the public, given the state of the emergency regarding the threat of COVID nineteen, members of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the agenda for participation information. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribe?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here. Changes to the agenda. We're amending the minutes for September thirteenth to include Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one one four for the pool plastering project. It was not previously assigned on the minutes. Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Saying none, I'm going to move on to proclamations. Proclaiming Hispanic Heritage Month. So I hear we have some representatives that will be coming on up.
So Mayor, tonight we have representatives of the Ballet Folclórico Viva México, who is a member of our Riverbank community.
Hi. I am very definitely. All right, well, welcome. Welcome, Norma. The City of Riverbank Proclamation Hispanic Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Whereas the City of Riverbank is committed to continuing to build a welcoming and neighborly community embracing diversity and fostering equity for every resident. And whereas Latinos and Hispanics have enriched the Riverbank community and played vital role in Riverbank's economy and workforce of cultural, educational, and political influence. Whereas residents of the Latino and Hispanic origin make up fifty-seven percent of the city's population, making it the largest race in ethnic minority Whereas Latino-Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the vibrant traditions of the people whose ancestry can be traced to Mexico, Central America, Caribbean islands, South America. And whereas Hispanic community has a profound influence on our city through its strong commitment to family, faith, hard work. And now therefore let it be resolved that the city council and the city of Riverbank hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month and invite all to celebrate the contributions that have to pay towards city, you know, for Hispanic. Find this day the entire city council. Take Chris Cherubin? Yeah. Do I get a photo op? All the council.
So I do want to congratulate the Ballet Folclórico Viva México as they are celebrating a milestone this year. I believe it's twenty years, Norma? Twenty-two years that they have been in the city, that they've been residing within the city of Riverbank. Do we need to move the flowers? Mm-hmm. I think so. So we wanted her to show off her.
There we go. I was right next to you, okay? All right. Would you like to stand on the table? All right. Is that a good photo op?
Norma, you have to get in there, too. A few words. Oh, there we go. There we go. So I'd like to say thank you to the mayor, to the council, and a huge thank you to the City of Riverbank. We have been collaborating with the Recreation Department since the year two thousand. And today, three of our dancers are here. We have this year about close to eighty students. We have a waiting list, about sixteen to twenty students still wanting to come into class. We have two teachers here with the assistant, my assistant Daisy and Christina. I don't dance as much anymore. They do the dancing. I just do the directing. But the collaboration with the city has been great because it allows us to continue to pass on our heritage. And that's always been the goal, mainly because we teach in English, we go to school in English, but we still have Mexican cultural ancestry that we want to pass on. So today we have a little representative from Jalisco. She's in the little blue skirt, a representative from Sinaloa, and she's in the pretty pink. And then we have a representative of our Astic ancestors, and that's Roxy in the hot pink there. They do learn what all their dresses mean. We try to teach them where everything comes from and just so that they could pass it on. But my biggest pleasure is to be here. Twenty-two years I've been doing this for forty-some. I can't tell you how many. But little Janice is one of the youngest, and she's actually a baby of one of my first students in two, in twenty, two thousand. So the cycle keeps going. We hope we continue to be able to do that, and we do it specifically for our community, and we do it because we have a good partnership. So thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Very nice. Bye.
Bye.
All right, at this time we'll have public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council L R A board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented during public comment cannot be discussed or acted upon. Public comment, please.
Thank you for allowing me time to speak, members of the city council. It's an honor to be here. I am coming again because I oppose this possible development of Riverwalk in the river bottom off McHenry. I came last time and said I would bring details this time. So this time I wanted to discuss the research that was published in Science Advances on August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two. In that article, they used computer modeling to try to predict the amount of flooding and weather patterns that our area is likely to experience. Because we live primarily with drought so often, you know, we had a catastrophic drought in two thousand and twenty-one, we had a catastrophic drought in two thousand and twelve. Because of this, we're very drought-minded, and we tend to forget the number of floods we've had. And we've had some very significant floods nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen ninety-seven, and a, those were really nothing. And I mean, they covered a lot of area, and they certainly covered the river bottom. But they were nothing in comparison to the flood of eighteen sixty-one, which covered most of the valley. It was a catastrophic flood. And looking at the weather patterns and modeling them, it looks like we are in for more variability, more drought, droughtier drought, and rainier rainy times. The chances of a catastrophic mega-flood have greatly increased. This is due partly because we have put pressure on some of our normal weather patterns, the El Nino, the southern weather pattern, Julian Magellan weather pattern, and sorry, Julian Madden. And because of that, because we're increasing the oscillation, we have much, much wetter wet times in store for us. The river bottom absorbs a lot of that. In the past, when we've had these big floods, the river bottom has protected us. It has taken that floodwater. It's flooded. And it's a floodplain. It did what it's supposed to do. It flooded. Now, if we prevented that, it would all either come in and inundate many, many houses. Let's say we prevented it. We put up great, great levees. And then we had a catastrophic flood, which they could not contain. Then it would flood all of us instead of just the river bottom. So it keeps us safe. It protects us. So not only do I believe it's unconscionable to allow building in an area that is so obviously prone to floods and is so obviously at risk. I think that not only is that unconscionable, but it also puts us all at risk because that is an important safety measure that we have in near, at this point in time, Riverbank. I just want to thank you for your time, and I will come back again, and I will offer some details from yet another article. I believe it's important to consider the aquifer and what affects it. So I will bring you a journal article on that next time. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Karen Conrato. I live on Hoag Road, and I'm here again before you to let you know that I oppose the Riverwalk proposed housing development. Again, also, I want to say thank you to all of you for letting us speak and listening to us so carefully. I do want to bring up tonight the options that are available instead of building on the river plain and river bottom that you, there's infill that can be done. It's not as cheap, of course, as.
Can you tell me what that is in Riverbank?
I see open spaces in Riverbank, and I also, you have to the east of us, you have poor quality soil.
And we have housing there being built?
Yes, I see that. You have lots of housing being built. You also have an agreement with Oakdale that I don't know if it could be renegotiated or not in terms of an open spot. I don't know how that works, but I mean, when you talk about valuable ag land and not valuable ag land, I think that's worth looking at. Also to avoid leapfrogging and to avoid urban sprawl. Those are both very important concepts that are being trying to be protected in our county, and I hope that you seriously consider the ramifications of building on the river bottom land. And you already know my other reasons, but thank you very much again.
Good evening. My name is Barney Agers. I live at seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue. I've owned that property for almost forty years. It's in Almonds. I've followed what goes on down in the river bottom for forty years. I think the thing that I'm opposed to the project of putting thirty-three hundred homes in a two-million-gallon water tank that sucks out of the aquifer that feeds this area. That's one concern. But the thing that I want to bring up tonight is the City of Riverbank in two thousand and sixteen expanded its sphere of influence, adding fourteen hundred and seventy-nine acres, which was intended to accommodate the city's growth for the next twenty years. Twenty years. We're six years into that, and already you're wanting to expand the sphere of influence again by a measure of thirteen hundred or fifteen hundred acres, which will take the sphere all the way to McHenry Avenue and Patterson Road. My wife and I, Jamie, who cannot be here tonight, also opposes it. We have studied in depth the, this plan and the density and how, how things are going to, if it's granted, how it's going to affect everything in this area. Traffic, traffic. We put thirty-three hundred homes down there. Think of the traffic that's going to come out on Patterson Road, McHenry Avenue, Coffee Road, et cetera. It's an immense project. I had some people out the other day to stand and view, and they were in awe that how big an area and space this is. I don't even want to mention the rest of the impacts, but it's no small thing. And I don't know where the funding for the infrastructure to expand the sewer plant and, you know, put in roads and all that this is going to require. So I urge people to dig into the minutia of the plan and have a vision for what, would it, how it could impact the whole area. And in my opinion, it would not be a positive impact. It would be a huge negative impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. My name is Dan Whitstone. I live at seventy-eight twenty-four McHenry Avenue. Again, my house overlooks the river bottom where the Riverwalk project is proposed. I just invite you to come out. If you want to stay on public roads, just go to the end of Hope. You can look over a lot of that river bottom. It's just, it's an amazing place. So if you want to get a little closer, there's a cherry orchard right next to my house. You can drive up the side of the cherry orchard and get a really good view, too. So again, I just, please come out and look at what you'll be deciding on. Again, I just think we can put this thing off for a couple more generations. So thank you.
Any further public comment? Saying none, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar consisting of items nine one, wave readings nine two, approval of September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, city council local redevelopment authority minutes with the inclusion of Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash one eleven. That was not in the minutes that was published. Item nine three, a resolution to adopt two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three schedule for park amenity rentals, recreation programs, and facility rental fees for the City of Riverbank. Item nine four, adopt a resolution to award bid for the overlay project two thousand and twenty-two to DDS Company, DBA Knife River Construction, and authorize execution of future change orders. Item nine five, second reading of an ordinance amending section fifty dot ten, method of collection of rates by city. Fifty dot eleven, payment section fifty-one dash zero two, sanitary sewer permit, billing procedures, section fifty-one oh three, rates and charges, section fifty-two sixty-four, payment of bills, section fifty-two sixty-five, deposits, and fifty-two sixty-six, disconnection for late payment of Riverbank Municipal Code to update utility practices. Is there anyone wishing to discuss any of these items? Anyone from the council wishes to discuss or pull any of these items? Saying none, I bring it to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion.
Time out.
Yes, sir.
Nothing on Zoom. Okay, bring it back to the council for consideration.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment.
A second.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar with amendment and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
On eleven one, progress report and preliminary design update on the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Michael Rydell, Public Works Directors, will provide an introduction to this item.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, Neil Colwell from K S N, our utility engineer, will give this report on the, where we're currently at with the design aspect of the plant.
Mayor, members of the council, Neil Colwell, K S N, and it's my pleasure to have this progress report presentation to the council tonight. I believe there's a presentation. Is there advanced? All right, thank you. So tonight, want to go through the progress that the city's team has made on advancing the regional recycle water project designed forward through preliminary design phase. This is per the scope of services that the council authorized in February of this year. A couple purposes of this effort. One is to provide for additional detail to the project concepts that were developed through two thousand and twenty-two, through the previously grant-funded and city-funded study of the feasibility of a recycle water program. At this point, with the detail, with the preliminary design, we're adding more detail to the documents. We're coming up with a fifteen percent level of design that has a lot more information in terms of the size, the location, the scale, the facilities. And this information is to support several facets. One is ultimately to help with the preparation of applications for financial assistance for the project, to support the preparation of environmental documents, as well as to support from the cost perspective, updated costs that allows the city to evaluate its options and the effect on rates from a variety of funding sources. What I'm going to be going to be going through here right now is a lot of the technical information that will support some of the questions and decisions that the council will be asked to make under the next agenda item. And so with respect to project phasing, details of the project, I'm certainly happy to answer the questions as we go through this presentation right now. Again, the information will be useful for your next agenda item. So our presentation here, want to go through six items. Go through the purpose and objectives of the project. Go through some of the requirements for the project. Why is the project needed? Represent that. Talk about some of the project benefits, particularly with the recycled water component to it, the water resource management element that the project provides has benefits to the city long term. Go through in a bit more detail some of the process elements, give you an idea of the scale, the size of the improvements that are being designed at this point. That then gives you a sense of the scale of the costs that are coming in and the basis of that. Give you an update on some of the funding sources that we're pursuing, financial assistance. It includes several grant sources to defray portions of the cost of this project and the status of that and the future actions that we have under that approach. And then just give you a summary of the ongoing schedule. So project purpose, really, from a fundamental perspective, it covers three elements. One is to provide for increased capacity. One, to continue to serve existing city residents. There's about a one-point-six-million gallons per day of flow comes into the plant. Based on the city's current projections of developments, like so currently approved development projects, additional flow will be coming from those new developments. We've made a projection based on the growth rates in the city over a thirty-year basis that we do expect the city's wastewater flows to go up to about two-point-three-million gallons per day. So starting off around one-point-six-million gallons per day, up to two-point, almost two-point-three-million gallons per day. So this, this project accommodates that, that future growth, both infill and then the currently approved flow, they'll be coming from the currently approved subdivisions. Second major component of the project is it improves the water quality of the treatment, improves the water quality for what's being applied to land north of the city here. It addresses, one of the major water quality concerns has become more and more prevalent in the central valley is nitrogen. So we have incorporated into this project removal of nitrogen to provide for the city, both through existing years and into the future, an ability to have, maintain compliance and improve water quality conditions in the groundwater moving forward. The third element here, when we bring in the recycled water component to this, it allows for beneficial reuse of the resource. The proposed program right now is based on supplying recycled water to agricultural users for a fee that will allow those users to use less or not use their groundwater as the recycled water is available that have a benefit to the city and the overall aquifer in terms of availability of groundwater for the city use. By providing that, that recycled water to the growers, again, for a fee, allows for a revenue source that will defray some of the cost of operation of the facilities. That's a benefit to the city overall. And then an element here that, as the water environment is still really changing in California, we anticipate, being very involved in water resources planning in central valley, we see that as water scarcity continues to become more and more of a concern, by having recycled water as part of the city's by having recycled water as part of the city's portfolio, it's going to provide for opportunities in the future. That's hard for, they're hard for us to identify right now. But future opportunities for things like transfers and being able to use the ability of recycled water in lieu of other water resources, either for revenue generation and or for, for, for better resource management. Those are some things that we can't put dollars to right now, but it's, it's setting the, the stage for the city over the next thirty years. So just a summary of, of your existing facilities. As I mentioned, the current influence flow to the plant is about one point five, one point six million gallons per day. The, the major facilities components you have right now is, is the, the wastewater comes, comes across in the, in a viaduct or to the waste art treatment plant site comes into an influence channel. An influence channel has a screening, screening equipment that removes certain particles, material out of the, out of the wastewater. The project is going to be replacing that equipment. That's, that equipment is old at this point. Your staff is having to fabricate themselves replacement parts because they can't get the parts. So that's an element that we want to, to address and, and replace that equipment. The, the treatment system is a very simple, very low cost treatment system that the city's been able to have the benefit of over, or many decades, aerated ponds. We're going to be replacing the aerated ponds with a more mechanically based treatment system, both for capacity and footprint as well as to provide for the reliable control of, of nitrogen. The, the current disposal method is through percolation ponds. And they, that had, they have capacity to accommodate, continue to accommodate current users with a limited excess capacity in them that would allow for some, some growth until new improvements are, are constructed for, for capacity, particularly on the recycled water side. Those will remain, we'll make some modifications to them for storage, but in, in most part, they'll remain as part of the city's ability for, for disposal. So I'm going to give you just a little bit of a, of history on some of your, your wastewater facilities. The, the, the treatment plant, and I couldn't find the exact date, so some others here may know this better than I do, but I, I believe the original facilities pond facilities were constructed either in the forties or fifties, largely in the location where they are today. The the facilities that you see right now with the treatment ponds, the percolation ponds, after some modification, modification sixty three, they haven't really changed fundamentally since, since then. There have been some changes to how the air is provided to the ponds. There have been some reconfiguration of the ponds in terms of their order and where, where wastewater comes in and how it circulates through, through the system. But, but largely the treatment process has not changed from before the nineteen sixties. You can see in this, this slide here, we have a, an aerial view from nineteen ninety three. You can see the percolation ponds that, that come up to certain, certain spot on the, on the east or the west side. What the city has done is, is there's been moderate growth. You've gone through a process to acquire land from adjacent landowner and expand of the percolation ponds. And that's what you see in the twenty twenty one image right there. That's pretty much what your facilities look like today. And I mentioned the capacity of those facilities, about one point eight million gallons per day is, is what, what's the, the capacity there. So to go beyond that flow, some project would have to occur. Expansion of percolation ponds, or in this case, the project that, that we're discussing tonight incorporates recycled water. So going back to the water quality element, this is a, some information that, from, from the city's monitoring data from twenty nineteen regarding nitrogen content in the, the affluent ponds as it's, after it's gone through, through the treatment process. The city started to monitor these two parameters here. One is nitrate that's in the, the light blue. And then the other one is labeled here TKN. It's, it's a total Kelldoll nitrogen. It's a, it's a combination of a couple different forms of, of nitrogen together. City started to monitor those in the ponds. And the really, the primary reason for that is after an independent review by a hydrogeologist two years ago of the city's monitoring data noted that there are some concerns about nitrogen, nitrogen and ammonia particularly. Forms of ammonia, of nitrate and ammonia forms of nitrogen, excuse me. And so we started to monitor this in the, in the F one. And it, it shows that the existing treatment process really is not able to, to remove nitrogen down to level that we'd want it to, which is shown by the red line. So that's one of the objectives of the project here is to, to address that long term. So additional needs for the project. Again, it is, as I mentioned, the previous slide, it, it upgrades the treatment process so that you have a reliable removal of, of nitrogen, both the sort of existing users and future users. The, the project by incorporating the treatment improvements and the recycled water component will provide for additional capacity to serve future users as well. And then third, as we mentioned, by having the recycled water use, you're going to be able to have opportunities for, for further resource recovery and, and cost recovery as well. So additional project benefits. Can mention the, the, the cost recovery. We, we do expect that through implementation of the project, there will be improvements to groundwater supply and, and quality, both of those. By allowing the recycled water be used in lieu of groundwater and then having a higher quality of water that continues to be put into the percolation ponds. And then last one, I'll touch on this. This is an important one here. Number four is the, the recycled water component of this project. And you look at the, the numbers here in a little bit is there's a lot of benefit to keeping that as a component of the project because of the grant opportunities that come into play. And I'll go into some specifics of that here in a moment. So looking at the, the details of the process, I know this process diagram is, is really busy. I'm not, not intending you to follow it. Each little line on it, it's more to, to give you an impression of what we've been doing under the, the, the preliminary design process. And in, in this, in this flow diagram, you can see the process components that were coming in and replacing the, the current aerated pond with both the, at the, the head of the treatment plant with screening, with splitter boxes, with emergency and equalization storage. The middle component is what we call our secondary process. So that's where we have treatment for the the biological components and the nitrogen nitrate components of, of the, of the wastewater removed there. We do show as you go down to the side, continued use of the percolation ponds. And then in the blue box is our recycled water component where we have filtration, disinfection, and then the ability of that water to be stored and delivered to, to users. So where are these facilities going to go? This diagram here shows how we're planning on using the site. The, the two, the, the two existing ponds are T, T one and T two. I think you, you might be able to see that, see that on the, the screen there. There we go. Thank you. So it's a T one and the next two is T two. So T two is the second treatment pond. What we're planning on doing is, is using that space to construct the new secondary treatment processes. So starting at the, the head of the plant, there's a little blue box down towards the, the bottom, bottom left. That's what we're going to do improvements to the headwork, screening improvements there. Also provide for facilities so that the city's sewer maintenance trucks can be able to take solids that are collected out of the collection system, put it in, into the treatment process there. So some improvements to that. Wastewater would then flow from that blue box over to the, the, the two salmon kind of yeah, racetracks that we call those. So that's a, it's an oxidation ditch type of treatment process. Very common for this size of wastewater facility. If you look around your neighboring communities, Oakdale has an oxidation ditch. Atwater has an oxidation ditch. Suda Modesto at their Jennings Treatment Plant has, has incorporated oxidation ditches. So it's a type, type of treatment process that we feel is, is very suitable and appropriate for, for the city, for your size and, and your degree of complexity in terms of being able to find staff who can, can understand the process. So two oxidation ditches shown in the salmon color that goes on to a couple of circular clarifiers, that water, as I go back. The, that water then, as it, after goes through the, the oxidation distance clarifiers, portion of it could go up into the two green seasonal storage ponds that we have shown there. We don't show the whole site. So you have the percolation ponds go off, off the screen here still. Or a portion of that would go over to the purple boxes where go through for the treatment for recycled water production. The dark gray are solids facilities. Unlike your current pond system where often you're, you let the solids accumulate in the pond. You may not have to remove those for five, ten, twenty, even thirty years. These types of processes required to more regularly manage the solids that come out of the treatment process and then remove them. So we've, we've incorporated elements of that as shown in the, the, the two darker gray boxes. And that's a side process to the, the secondary treatment process. The tertiary treatment, we have shown dissolved air flotation and then granular media filtration and then UV disinfection. That, that's what's in those purple, purple boxes there. That recycled water then would be stored in the light gray circle. That would be a nine hundred thousand gallon recycled water storage that allow for the system to operate at a fairly regular pace. And then recycled water pumping then would deliver to up to two users right now that have been identified as, as interested in receiving recycled water for agricultural purposes. The criteria for the facility's design is what we call Title twenty two tertiary recycled water. Title twenty two being a portion of the California Code of Regulations that, that, that specify design and operational requirements of these facilities. We've used that as, as our basis for, for planning and design. Other facilities that you see here in yellow, the large T one box that is repurposing the existing T one pond so that it would provide for equalization and emergency storage. So if you have any issues with any mechanical component of the treatment process, that's where wastewater goes. Because there's no ability for the city to stop waste water from coming in. You can't call people and say, stop flushing your toilets. So that's, that's a very important element of, of, of the, the, the plan here. The other small boxes are a stormwater management systems that would be, be incorporated to, to manage stormwater generated within, within the site. That water ultimately would be applied to the percolation ponds internal to the existing process, similar to how the existing plant operates. So this is just a quick snapshot of, of what that, that site plan looks like. This is a bit more of an engineering diagram showing the, the grades in the facilities. What we're, we're taking advantage of here is there's really, there's two big holes in the ground that we're going to be putting our facilities in. Little bit of excavation because some of them are pretty deep. And then we're going to fill back portion of it so that they're, they're fairly low to the ground. Allow water to go through them for the most part via gravity. But we do have to have some pumping to be able to lift water up through the, the subsequent processes. So it allows us to minimize some of the earthwork elements here by putting those, those facilities in those, those ponds. So I'm going to give you some examples of what these facilities look like. So the secondary process, as I mentioned, is an oxidation ditch process. This is an example here. Similar size, it's a little bit smaller at the city of Live Oak in, I think it was two thousand nine, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. They replaced their largely pond system with an oxidation ditch process, very similar design objectives there that, that we have for this plan. So it's an example of, of the concrete structures. You can see a couple of us there looking at the, the aeration process. We are planning for mechanical based aeration as opposed to the fine bubble aeration, just because the mechanical, it's, it's much simpler. So it allows you to have a simpler operation, simpler maintenance activity than, than, than the fine bubble. Again, a decision that, that we've gone through working with your staff on how to, how to accommodate that. The, the facilities would again provide for solids management and storage, solids de-watering. And then as you look at the site layout, let's go back here. In this one here, you can see some, some boxes that aren't colored. Those are concepts on what the future expansion could be. Not that they're not part of the current project, but at least we're thinking about what the future beyond twenty five, thirty years maybe. So as part of the secondary process, we have what are called clarifiers. So this is the, the snapshot there of the, the circular walkway. That's what we call a clarifier. The water comes out of the oxidation ditch, the solid settle to the bottom, clarified water comes off the top. That water would have the organic material largely degraded removed from it. The nitrogen would be removed to a level that would be acceptable. Water from there would then either go onto the percolation ponds or on to the, the filtration disinfection system for recycled water. As I mentioned, this, this type of process does have a lot more mechanical components. So here's an example again from the same site that has pumping that returns water in circulation to allow the process to operate. So there's going to be more of those components involved in, in this project. This is a schematic as part of the fifteen percent design that we've completed that shows the, the concept for the, the filtration elements. Up in the upper portion, you can see a kind of a square box. It's our, what we call our flocculation box that, that where we have some chemical addition to allow the particles to clump together, goes on then to filtration that removed. And below that then is, we have two channels, one with equipment where she have shown it that would have equipment for UV disinfection. Here's some examples of what that might look like. Again, the, the, the flocculation filtration typically concrete structure with a shade structure over the top of it, similar to what you see there on the right. The middle, middle photo is a UV disinfection channel. In our climate here, it's usually more cost effective to just have those as open, open structures with a canopy over the top. We don't have to worry about the, you know, the snow and really, really cold conditions. So that's a, a, a cost efficient way to, to, to construct these, these systems. And these are similar to the concepts that we have in our, our pre-design right now. And the last photo there is just some of the, the equipment that would go into that, that channel for disinfection. Okay, so now to the numbers. This, this overall project, based on the details that we've, we've developed, as I mentioned, again, we have our fifteen percent design. We've gone through, be able to do detailed quantity takeoffs on all the components. We've been working with and talking to equipment suppliers and manufacturers got their quotes, adding all that up. And we're coming up to a total project cost of, in today's dollars of about a hundred and five million dollars. Now, what we need to do in terms of planning our project moving forward is, is to address when the project will actually be constructed. Because this is still going to be a time, a process can take some time, both for design and permitting, ultimately to get, get a project that's, that's, you know, put on the street for, for competitive bidding. So we've added a, an escalation to a midpoint of construction we would anticipate in twenty twenty five with about a four percent annual rate of, of increase. So that's an additional seven point four million dollars. So all told, full project. As we, we described it here, based on the fifteen percent plans at a hundred and twelve, almost under thirteen million dollars. Now to compare this with the previous numbers in twenty twenty, the concept, project concept was about sixty four million dollars. So provide some information here and some of the difference. So, you know, logical question. Okay. Well, how did it go from sixty four to a hundred and twelve? You know, one of them I mentioned is the projection to midpoint of construction twenty twenty five. Overall, we have seen even since the, 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 the previous study in, in early twenty twenty, in early twenty twenty, fairly significant escalation in construction costs. And, and that makes up for about almost a fourteen million dollar difference or delta in, in over and above the sixty, the sixty four million dollar project cost from before. Couple other elements have come into, into the design that based on us, you know, going through and evaluating the construction sequence, one is to to supply soil for the limited fill that we do have around the, the structures. We're looking at going into existing pond T four deepening that so that it provides a benefit for, for seasonal storage. But in order to go into T four, there's accumulated sludge that's been in there for, for years and years. That material would have to be removed. And so there's almost a, a, you know, a little bit more than a five million dollar cost for that, that sludge, sludge removal from that pond to allow that material to be removed. We have added dissolved air flotation as a, as a process component. That's a five point eight million dollar project cost to add that. That is certainly something that, that, that can be phased. And we're going to talk about some phasing options here in a moment. But the dissolved air flotation, the reason why we brought that into our recommendation now is that it will provide benefit to It will provide benefit to the overall process in the future, particularly when the seasonal storage is used. And and water, for water to come back from the seasonal storage and go into filtration as it's set in the seasonal storage ponds, it's grown algae. That algae tends to be hard to to remove with the filters, so the dissolved air flotation would be used if and when. Again, this is, this would be certainly a future need, but could be part of a current project. You'd remove that that algae through dissolved air flotation before you filter that water for recycled water production. 4.2 million dollars additional specific project costs. We we worked really hard to try to get the flow to come through this whole system without additional pumping, we couldn't do it. We've got the flow all the way through the secondary process. Once it gets to the secondary process, right now that your ponds flow from the influence channel all the way into the percolation ponds, there's no, no pumping on the site. We couldn't get that to work with the process elements that we've we've brought into play here that that are needed for this. So there's additional pumping, uh, equipment costs have come into play as as we've looked at this this detail. Additional details that have have come into the project. Totally about 12, a little bit more than 12 million dollars. In terms of increasing the scope is to integrate modifications to T two to allow it to be used long term. For emergency and and equalization storage, including providing aerators in in that that pond. And then the ability to return water from that back into the process. We have included redundancy into the facilities. Again, a treatment, treatment plant like this, these operate in a 24/7 basis. And so we've identified that redundancy that that's recommended to this this point. Lastly, as 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 part of the details we pull together here is is really really define the site improvements that are needed for for the site. To be able to accommodate the facilities that we as we've laid them out. One of the the challenges that we did encounter is we look more closely at the construction sequencing and construction access. Is that the existing wastewater treatment plant site access road is narrow, it's under the railroad trestle. And we've determined that for most of the construction that would occur in this project. That it would not allow for the major earthworking equipment to come in for the the major equipment pieces to come in, so. There would have to be an alternative access route essentially constructed for for the construction purposes. As as part of this, so these additional costs have come into play. So in in terms of looking for ways to provide financial assistance to the project. This is a list of the four primary areas that that the city has been actively engaged in. Finding both grants and financial assistance in in the form of loans. Starting off with the State Water Service Control Board. We are planning to have a complete application to the State Water Board by the end of this year. For for both grant and and loan funds. Through discussions with the State Water Board, we're fairly confident that there will be a 15 million dollar grant available to the project. Based on it having a recycled water component, if it doesn't have that component, that 15 million dollar grant would go away. Maybe so there's some other lesser funds that we might be able to be successful with, but I think that 15 million would would go away if it didn't have that. We are, we've started the process with the Bureau of Reclamation through federal program under a title, title 16. Where the Bureau of Reclamation is promoting and funding and financing recycled water in the western states. Again, this is a a program that would. That the project would be eligible for when it has a recycled water component. We're hopeful that through that that process, we can get at least 25 million dollars in grant funding for for the project and we'll be completing. The application, an updated report to start the application process here in this next month. We've also started the a process to obtain at least loan financing. If not the ability to have grant or possibly loan forgiveness through the EPA's program. Their, what they call their WIFIA program, and I'm I'm blanking on what the acronym stands for, Water Infrastructure Investment Act, I think. So we will complete that process here in October to have the notice or the letter of intent. Submitted to to EPA for for WIFIA. The last one is a program that recently came up. And is changing based on current policies of the federal level. Is through FEMA, there's a a program for mitigating hazards, hazard mitigation grant program. A particular subcomponent of that is what they call BRIC, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. And the city has submitted a notice of in of of interest to Cal OES. So California Office of Emergency Services manages that, coordinates with FEMA for for that that funding. That was submitted September 16th, today we had a discussion with with Cal OES. That the 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 notice of interest has been approved so that city will be able to move forward with making application for grant funding under that. If we're successful on that, it mentions a 75% coverage, but it does have a 50 million dollar cap. So based on the project scope and scale that you're seeing right now, there's a potential for 50 million dollar grant coming through that that program right there. So we're we're hopeful, hopeful in that. So with with any of these programs, we don't, we don't have results yet, this is, these are processes that we need to go through, they're highly competitive. We need to present the project in the best, best light and conditions that we can. But in the end, we don't know what the results are until we go through the process and get get the response from these agencies. So for the council's consideration, we not, we're not just focusing on 112 million dollar project. There's options, there's different ways we can approach this, this project. And some of these alternatives here will be discussed in more detail by Bartle Wells under the the next agenda item. From a rate, the rates perspective, the effect on the rates. And so again, information providing here is going to support your discussion and input to to the next agenda item. So we've looked at that three different alternatives to the 112 million dollar project. One is to reduce the scale of the project so that it retains its basic fundamental. Conditions of capacity components, but with certain project elements deferred to later date. It retains the recycled water component, for example, that allows it to be eligible for for the substantial grant funding. We've also looked at the option that if the city did not go down the recycled water route. You do have new development that's already been approved, that's that's going to be generating wastewater over the years, you'd have to do some, some form of of expansion. So that expansion could be something like you done over the past several years. We would say that from the the water quality perspective, changing the treatment process is important. Because that's going to be a regulatory compliance element in the future, but you could go down, excuse me, the path of. Continue to expand with ponds for disposal capacity, so we looked at that. Lastly, if you just look at taking care of current conditions, only to address the water quality. Improvement needs of the current community, we've we've come up with an estimate of the project cost at that that kind of base minimal level. So looking at the first one here, if this is a a phase project, then the bullet items down below. Identify some of those elements that would be deferred to to later years. This, this project here, if you went forward with this project, again, about an 80, almost 85 million dollar. Construction under concurrent dollars, we project that to 2025, that's about a about a 90 million dollar project. It would include deferring the removal of sludge from T four, that sludge continued to sit there. You deal with that later, sometime later in the future, and we would go over to pond P nine and borrow. Soil from that site, doesn't give you the storage benefits that that T four would. We would defer the dissolved air flotation project to later date so that as flows increased and you wanted to return water from seasonal storage. You could do that as a later, later improvement. We install one headwork screen instead of two, can that be deferred for a, you know, five to 10 year basis or so. For solid seawatering, we do two screw, screw presses instead of three, again, as capacity needs come in, that would be done in a later date. And as the second to last bold item there is is the recycled water project could only focus on one as instead of two, two growers. And so you would be deferring some flexibility of having multiple users down to really having a. Have an agreement with one, one user that would be using recycled water, so it's something that could be done. And then we could have a a more simple improvement too, yes, thank you. You can tell I'm I'm getting parched.
Neil, since while you're taking a a water break real quick, I'm I'm assuming these deferred costs would not affect our chances in the grants, right?
In this case, no, because you still have the recycled water, so so that's the key thing is being able to show the recycled water. Yeah.
Is a possibility of a 90 million dollar grants that are available, where you described it, 50 million from FEMA. 25 million and then 15.
Right, with each of those tend to have their their contribution component, so. To have the full project grant funded is unlikely. Not the city not, not being classified as disadvantaged. So, yeah, so the 50 million, the 50 million is under the FEMA grant is a cap, but it's a 75% level, so. You know, at the 90 million, it's it's still, it's it's still coming at 50. The 15 is a straight up 15, so that could be used to match with the FEMA. So you can double up there, so we have 65 million right there, that's the the potential. The, the the Bureau grant may conflict with the FEMA grant. Because they're going to look at, the feds are going to look at, okay, what's, what's the, they call the the federal contribution, so. That would be something that we would have to navigate and see whether or not those.
Bigger grant.
Exactly.
But there are other programs out there too, USDA has the sustainable farming. Grants that they gave out this year in the neighborhood of, I want to say 800 million. And if they make that available, I don't know what the current status of of the budget is for next year. But that would be where you could put water into areas for agricultural sustainment. Which is supplying it to the, to the farmers right across the street.
Yeah, so we'd have to look at the the specific funding opportunity there and see if the if if the plant were to be eligible under that, my my familiarity with. What's that?
Have them build a piping, that's significant.
Yeah, a lot of those, it, they tend to focus on improvements on the growers growers land. And at this point, the city's project gets up to the property line, the growers would pick that up from there and 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 take it. But that's certainly something we look at, see if there, if there's an opportunity there for for some of the delivery facilities to be covered by that. Okay, any other questions on this?
Neil, you mentioned that a project like this would be good for us. Our city of our size, are you looking at now? How much can we grow and it will still be good for us, can you clarify it?
Right, yeah, so the in in in, what I was talking about is the process, treatment process. So it's a very specific oxidation ditch process that. Is really well suited for facilities that are in the one to maybe five or six million gallons per day. Level, you can start to go with different top process types, conventional activated sludge. Different processes that may be more suitable, more economical for for larger, larger systems. So we we're very comfortable with this treatment methodology. Again, looking at your your neighbors here, many communities similar size. Have have gone with the oxidation ditch process, you saw the photos from Live Oak. The city of Dixon converted their ponds to an oxidation oxidation ditch process. Again, Atwater did the same. Patterson, many years ago. Started with an oxidation ditch process and they're expanding in in that that realm too, so it's. In terms of your neighbors have the same process, it's really indicative of its stability. And also, the benefit of that is, it's been more and more difficult to find staff to come and operate these systems. And this, this will require some additional staffing. And so to the ability to find somebody that's familiar with the oxidation ditch process, you have many systems around you. That will have people coming up through their ranks that would be able to come over and know exactly how to operate the system.
Okay, so size wise, what would be the maximum size that we could grow to and this would still be? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, size wise, what would be the maximum that you could give us that this could take care of? Say we grow to 50,000 in 20 more years, are we still going to be able to handle that with this type? I mean, there might need to be some changes, but I think.
Right, that too. Yeah, and and the, you look at the modular nature, nature of the way we've laid this out, let's come back to. Like this is probably the best. The, so the two oxidation ditches that we show there in the salmon color, so that's about 2.3 million gallons per day. We show another one next to that, that would increase another, I think these, I think we just have these size for about about one and a half million gallons per day. So the third one could go in in there as well, this would take the city very far down, down the road. Many years and and beyond what we've calculated based on looking at all the currently approved developments. This would be a process that that could accommodate that in the future, so you know, five, six million gallons per day or or more.
Okay, and then I just like to make comment to the public that water is the key to life. And if you study history, which we got a little bit of earlier this evening. When water goes away, civilizations die. One one that I can think of nearby is the Mayan Indians disappeared after having an empire down in Central America for a thousand years. And then all of a sudden, they just disappeared. The theory is the climate changed, the water wasn't there, they couldn't do it anymore. We have to look at that and look ahead, because we are in a climate change, we don't know how long it's going to last. I know this is going to be very expensive, none of us up here like it. But if you have to pay 25 dollars a gallon to get water, because it's not there, you're going to like to have it. Take a look at our, just recently, our pandemic, water was very valuable and it went sky high. And if you don't have the water, you're not going to have a society, so we're looking ahead at the future. So that we can in this city not not have problems with that, hopefully for a long, long time by doing this project. Thank you.
Thank, go ahead, continue.
Okay, and I just want to point out then when into the next agenda item, these, really these two alternatives between what we call the full, full project. And then the a phase project are evaluated further, so that just want to make that connection when when the the next speaker comes up, the next item. So so the next project that we looked at is if, if the city were to forego the recycled water component, expand its disposal capacity via percolation ponds. That would reduce the cost down to about a, about a 78 million dollar project cost, loses the benefit of recycled water. Would require negotiation with adjacent landowner to buy additional percolation disposal, a land for for capacity. Really has a, is a, you know, a modest reduction in the cost. But with the grants that we're fairly, fairly confident we're going to get, you know, there really, there doesn't seem to be much of a reason to go this direction. Without, without realizing it, without it having a real cost benefit to the, to the, to the city. Next one is, just to answer this question, what if, what if we did the absolute minimum, we wanted to answer this, this question here and this, this slide. And and this is based on only doing a secondary treatment process improvement. Just accommodate 1.6 million gallons per day flow right now with the nitrogen removal component of it. So that the current percolation disposal operation could continue in in compliance. So that brings the cost down to about 55 million dollars, and again, if we project that to a construction, if that happened in 2025, it's about a. 58, about 58 and a half million dollars. The the challenge with this, it's 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 in some ways, it's not a real project. Because you would need to do a capacity expansion almost immediately after this project was constructed. And it doesn't provide the recycled water benefit that you'd be getting through through grants on it, so. But it's, we know that there's, you you get these numbers, the big numbers, we want to try and answer questions as as we we would expect them to to come up. So any, any further questions on the project alternatives and and costs at this point? I mean, go into schedule again, this is a busy slide here, this is our overall. I mean, go into schedule again, this is a busy slide here. This is our overall schedule simplified form that takes us through the end of 2026 for construction on this. So we're in the first set of boxes right now. We're preliminary design, environmental document and, and financial analysis being, can be conducted. Now, so right now, the, the remaining 2022 activities is for us to complete the preliminary design. We're, we're almost done with that right now to have a draft report. You mentioned we have our 15% design drawings here. That again is supporting the environmental documentation as well as the financial analysis. The environmental documents will, will move forward towards a December timeframe for, for council review and adoption at that point. The financial package, which has, as the first element of it is the draft rate study, which will be presented under the next agenda item here, depending on the direction from, from the council for that, that action could go forward towards a completion December, December of this, this year. As I mentioned, right now we're in the process of completing certain levels of application for the state water board for financial assistance, including the $15 million grant. Your recommendation title 16 application will go in this, this, this year with the letter of interest will go in so that in 2023, we can complete that. And then the Cal OES documentation, we have additional application information will go in later this year. Then that will, will put us into next year for consideration by, by FEMA. So looking forward to activities again, based on, on, on input direction from, from the council on some action items here you have tonight. We would move forward with completing the funding applications next year in 2023. So there's going to be initial applications. There's always more information that's asked in, in details that we need to put together to make sure that these documents are in front of the, the, the agencies and being considered. The, what we're planning on again, based on, on council direction here ultimately is we would have a process to select a design consultant to, to go through and take the project forward with the detailed design. Right now, you know, KSN, we're performing the preliminary design and managing the process moving forward right now. But, but this is a large scale project. You want to have a, a, a firm that has good horsepower to take this project, project forward. So that would be a process to select that consultant, bring them onboard in 2023. 2024 would be, you start designing 2023, take design through 2024. And then towards the end of 2024, take the project out for bids. You'd have competitive bids on, on the project in 2024 that would allow for either to start construction that year or early in the next year and ultimately take it through 2026 for completion of construction startup commissioning and, and then operation from that, that point forward. So that is the, the end of the discussion and presentation. Any, any further, further questions?
Just one comment. It is important that we complete these items in 2022 because money we know is available in 2023. We're uncertain about any funding opportunities in 2024. So with that availability of possibly up to 90 million, most likely 45 to 50 million, that's available for in the next year that will be determined. And then any additional funding can be, can be requested from different agencies. So it is important that if we went, we need to do something with a wastewater treatment plant. And this is one way to keep us out of the eye of the state. And I think that by moving forward, we should satisfy re, recharging the aquifer from what we take out, providing farming enough product to where it's basically a water right for them to have. And it's not water just goes away. It is water that will be reused again and again. So any questions from the council?
I have a question. Okay. So the recycled water storage, is that above ground or is it in a tank, high tank or is it?
That's, that's below ground.
Below ground.
Yeah. Again, we, since the city has the existing ponds, big holes, it's actually the, the tank itself is a little bit more expensive, but when we take into account the need to fill, fill in, it's actually less costly to have a below grade tank in that, that case.
Okay. And then you mentioned some options for it. So option one, we assume is going to remove the, the nitrate. And then option two and three is would those options still continue to remove the nitrate also?
Each of the options we've included or, or retained, the, the treatment improvements that would remove nitrogen. We, we expect that that, the city's permit right now is a, a, it's an older permit. And through, in the next couple of years, we, we'd anticipate the regional board coming through and renewing the permit and would expect that the limits would be similar to what Slightest Sanitary District has with certain nitrogen levels and limits. That's why we're, we're tracking that. It's important to know that. So we've retained the nitrogen removal component in each of those alternatives because we felt like that that was a minimum that's necessary not to go down a path of having improvements and then getting to non-compliance.
Okay. And last question, we have a huge concern about the sludge that's in the pond. So how difficult is it going to be for us to get that sludge out?
Well, in, in, in the, the pond T4, it was a, a five, 5.1 million dollar difficulty. It's, it's a,
So it's not going to be easy.
The process is expensive. The equipment is, is specialized to remove that. You have to remove it. You have to de-water it. You have to test it, make sure that, that it's below certain levels. And then you have to haul it off to, to a, a, you know, certain location for it to be land applied or disposed of. And all of those, there's uncertainties with each, each of those. So that's why it's, it's a fairly large dollar item.
And it's in all of our ponds or just certain ones?
Just certain ones. The, the pond T4 is really is the one that has the, has the most material in it. That's of, of concern. There's, there's some in P2 that's accumulated over the years, but a lesser, lesser level.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just make a quick comment. I think it's, I'll kind of echo what the mayor kind of said. I think it's important that we kind of keep the recycled water aspect of this. We don't want to, we don't want to lose, we're not going to get the 85 million grants, but if we can get close to that to cover this and for that reason, thank you for the project. Looks, it looks great. I look forward to seeing more of the design plan as it, as it builds out. And for that, I'll be leaning towards that phased approach. I think that one makes the most sense for us. So thanks.
I would like to also support what the mayor said and what council member Rudy just said also, we need to get it this year because it may not be available in the future.
All right. As costs, as we all know, cost continues to go up, up, up.
All right. Anyone from the public wishing to add comments?
Mayor Council, I'm Leanne Jones Cruz. I live at Garden Oak Drive here in Riverbank. I just had one question. With the recycled project, when you're selling it back to the farmers, I didn't see in the report, how is that water get, how does it get back to the growers? Does it, is it trucked? Is it piped? And that was just my question.
The farmers, the farms that are, they're adjacent to the project and it would be piped just to their property, then it's their responsibility to irrigate however they want. Or it can go to SSJID, which I'm not in favor of.
So the cost of the piping up to our property line would be included as part of the project. The ag users that are willing to, to partner with us would then have to build the rest of the facilities on their own site. No mayor, there's no one wishing to speak.
Hey, thank you very much Neil and your team for providing us the update. We look forward to you know, concluding this this year and in 2026. All right. Moving on, item 11.2, presentation of the draft sewer rate study prepared by Bartle Wells Associates and request to establish the proposition 218 public hearing date for the adoption of the proposed sewer rates on Tuesday, December 13th, 2022.
So mayor, this item is a secondary item to the information you just received. As Neil mentioned during his presentation, part of the financial package that has to be submitted to some of the granting and funding agencies requires a look at your rates in order to make sure that the project is going to be sustainable in the future. So the rate study that is before you has evaluated a variety of scenarios that were presented by Neil, including the sort of all in or the, you know, the project as a whole, looking at it in a phased component. And then what were, what would our rates look like if we were to do no project on our plant would remain as is? So we do have Eric Helgason with Bartle Wells Associates who has prepared a presentation to discuss these rates.
Hi there. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Eric.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Marcella. As was said, my name's Eric Helgason. I'm a, a managing this project for Bartle Wells Associates. And I'm here to go over the, the rates associated with each scenario. Also thank you again for, it's a pleasure to be back speaking to the council and, and a new, a new rate subject. So today I'm going to go over the background and objectives of our wastewater rate study. Going to touch on proposition 218 because it plays a pivotal role in, in both the rates for each scenario and then also just how the rates are designed in general. Going to go over the scenarios and, and what the rates would need to be for each one. Go through a brief survey of regional rates and kind of how your rates compare. And then, and with next steps and recommendations. So just a quick background, the sewer enterprise is a financially self-supporting enterprise and the, the sewer and the rates are the primary source of revenue for the, for the sewer enterprise. So without sewer rate revenue being sufficient, the enterprise would not be able to provide sewer service. Because of that, the sewer rates need to be able to fund the operating expenses, fund all of the ongoing capital repair and replacement expenses. As well as to be able to fund the wastewater treatment plant, which we're talking about today. The prior rate increases did strengthen the financial condition of the utility. If the water wastewater treatment plant project wasn't part of this financial plan, the rates would only need to increase with inflation. However, the current rates are not adequate to fund the, the wastewater treatment plant project as they are. So we'll go into what the rates will need to be for each of the project scenarios. Also, the, the sewer rates, you know, the objectives of the study include meeting those funding needs as well as reflecting the cost of service. And part of that is complying with meeting all legal requirements and Prop 18 is a big part of that. Our goal is to phase in the rates over time to minimize the extent to customers as much as, the impact to customers as much as possible. You know, we're, we're looking at starting the phase in to up to the necessary rates this current fiscal year and phasing up to the, the amount they'll need to be by about 27, 28 to meet the, the debt service for the project. Fiscal year 27, 28. As part of this, we developed 10-year financial projections to evaluate how the, the impact of, of these rates, not just in the current five-year window, but to make sure that the rates would position the enterprise to be in a strong financial position, you know, in, in 10 years as well. All the scenarios that we review for the water treatment plant include inflation and growth assumptions. And, and just to give a, a baseline, where, where we project you need to be, just in the inflation, you need about four and a half to 4% increases each year to keep up with current inflation. And that would put your rate for residential users at about $60.50 at the end of, in 26, 27, at the end of this five-year 218 window we're looking at. So to go into a little more detail on proposition 218, it's the, the, you're required to notice the maximum rates that the, the council can adopt over the, over a five-year period. And how that plays into what we're talking about today with the wastewater treatment plant scenarios is that the, the state, to qualify for the state revolving loan fund, you, we cannot include the grant assumptions in the maximum noticed rates. So the city needs to notice maximum rates that show that the, in order to show that the city can support a project without grant funding in order to qualify for grant funding. So I'm going to be showing the, the maximum rates that you would need to notice for each project. However, as if and likely will, as grant funding becomes available, the city will not necessarily have to implement those maximum rates. And I would most strongly suggest that, you know, as, as the, especially three years into this 218 notice period, if the council decides to indeed send out 218 notices to reevaluate your financial position and how much grant funding has come in and what the final, more complete design cost of the project will be. And then assess whether the city will need to, what, what rate the city actually will need to raise the rates to, and it will maybe below the maximum amount. Some other key points about 218 is just that rates cannot exceed the cost of providing service. So that's what the maximum notice rate. Also, you know, the city is, is, rates are all used for beneficial, for sewer enterprise purposes. Additionally, that the sewer rates have to be proportionate to the service provided. And we did do a cost of service review of your rates. And we feel that the, the current rate structure is reflecting, that still reflecting that proportional cost recovery. And that review is included in the, the draft rate study which we submitted. And finally, the procedural requirements of Prop 218 are that the, the notices must go out at least, Prop 18 notices must go out at least 45 days in advance of a public hearing. And during that 45-day period and at the public hearing, rate pairs have the opportunity to submit protests. If majority of your rate pair submit protest, the rates as notice cannot go forward. The 45-day period is important for what we're talking about because we are aiming to have the rates at least the 218 notice process completed by the end of this year in order to submit the financial packet to the state revolving loan fund for their, to, to get, again, the approval process and to get the submission in within this calendar year. So that, that, the, the window to have that 45-day period is, is fast closing. So as Neil, as Neil talked about, there, there are three scenarios. And the, and each one has some different components. The, the base project, which is supporting all, you're supporting the plan, the growth of the city. And, and along with that, the, with the planned growth, you will be able to collect, you know, you'll be collecting connection fees, which do offset the need for some rate revenue. You're also expanding your rate base. So there's more rate pairs to pay for the, the cost of the plant, which in the long term makes the rates you need lower. The, the project also supports recycled water. And we project conservatively that about $100,000 per year, once the plant is in, in operation, will be brought in for, from the sale of recycled water. And then as Neil was saying, the, the projects that support recycled water on, also will be eligible. also will be eligible for a lot more for, and, and the likelihood will increase greatly for grant funding. So, so the base project and the phase project are almost identical, except that the phase project will require additional construction in order to meet the, the full growth projection. And as we keep seeing, construction costs keep increasing. So that's one thing to consider. And, and also the, the, the base project, the project with no recycled water will basically just meet existing needs and not be able to support new development. And you will also need additional construction if you want to support new development. So with that, the, the maximum rate, so the, the final rate in this five-year 218 notice that we would, that the city would send out would be one hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirteen cents for a residential customer for the base project, one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents for the phase project, and then ninety-two dollars and seventy-two cents for the minimum project. So those are the maximum rates that you'd get to over the five-year period with the 218 notice. However, as we've been emphasizing, grant funding will be likely. And so the actual rate that you will implement, depending on how much grant funding, we ran scenarios for the fifteen million, which is the very likely grant. So that would reduce the, the overall maximum rate for the base project and the phase project by roughly ten dollars a month for a residential customer. And then with the, the forty dollar grant option, it would bring it down even more. So from one twenty-three to a little, to ninety-nine seventeen for the base project and from one oh nine thirty-nine to eighty-six seventy for the phase project. And just one thing to point out, if you did, if you were to get it and it's not a guarantee by any means for the forty million, it's, it's, it's not as likely as the fifteen million. But if you were to get that full forty million, the phase project would end up being less than the amount for the minimum project on a monthly basis for residential customers. And, and just to reiterate, the, the recommended rate, if you did not have the wastewater treatment plant project, the recommended rate in twenty-six, twenty-seven would be about six, sixty dollars and fifty cents. So just to go into detail on the scenario, on, for, on each scenario, for scenario one, you'd be looking at about twenty percent increases in rate revenue per, per year and increasing rate revenue on average by about, I believe it was one point three million dollars a year. So increasing about a million in the first year and up to about two million in the final year. This, this assumption, as I said, does reflect the addition of recycled water sales and also reflects some connection fee revenue. The, the large bars, cash funded capital, for this scenario, you would be generating rate revenue sufficient to provide some cash funding of the project. And we take that into account. And so that would lower the total debt service requirement. And a, a, a key thing that all of these scenarios achieve is being able to have your revenues be at a sufficient level to meet the debt service coverage requirements of that alone would entail. So that's, it, it's meaning that your annual revenues are at a cer, at a level, annual revenues, less expenses are one point three times greater than the projected debt service. So having cash funded capital helps bring down the total loan amount a little bit, but you still need to have that, that annual revenue stream to meet the requirement of the debt service coverage requirement. So the, this shows the, the rates and how they would increase every year. As, as I mentioned, it was a twenty percent increase to your rates on an annual basis for the maximum rate scenario. And so the, as I was saying, the, the rates will phase in from your current rate of forty-nine, forty-eight to fifty-nine, thirty-eight, this fiscal year, up to the one hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirteen cents in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. For the phased scenario, the overall increases would be a little less, eighteen percent increases for the first three years down to fifteen in your fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, leading to the, the, the one hundred and nine dollars and thirty-nine cents shown in the that I showed earlier. One thing I forgot to mention, and I apologize, going through this, going through this chart, I was going through it a little too quickly. Each column here on this graph represents the total expenses the city would incur in each year. So the, the gray is the operating expenses, which we project would go down a bit during, as, as the, the city phases out its current treatment plant. And then the new treatment plant we're projecting would, will add about a million dollars in expense once it's fully operational. But then, but the, the current cost of, of chemicals and electricity will need to be netted out of that. So it'll be, I believe it was about three quarters of a million dollars after the net, but I'll, I'll look that up and, and get back to you on that, that final number. The, the, the dotted black line is the reserve. So it's showing as you're, as you're building up your, as you're building up your, your rates, phasing those in for this project, you build up your reserves. And then the, the, the blue portion of the column is the cash funded capital. So then you use that capital you built up as your, as you're building yours, as you're increasing your rates to pay down a portion of the project and not need to finance that portion. And at the end of the, end of the, this process and, and actually a few years beyond the 218 notice period is, is when the plant will be fully operational. So that's why I included an additional two years. You'll see that the revenues are, are parallel, are matching the, the total projected expenses. Because in, in addition to the water treatment plant, you also have other capital costs that you have to, you know, maintain your collection system. And, and just general repair and replacement, you have to have an ongoing level of capital spending as, as well. So the, for each scenario, your, your revenues are going to end up being about even with your projected expenses. So for phase, phase three, the minimum project, you would need about fifteen percent increases, dropping down to ten percent in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven. The same overall concept with the financial plan, you know, phasing up to the project, building reserves, spending some of those reserves on, on the project itself and having your revenues be that even with expenses. However, these revenues have, include a lower growth assumption because the plant will not be able to handle growth, the minimum scenario won't be able to handle growth and then also a lower, and then also not including the recycled water sales revenue. The, the final rate, just as we showed in all the other scenarios for residential customers would be ninety-two, seventy, ninety-two, seventy-two, up from forty-nine, forty-eight. And just to emphasize again, the rates that I'm showing would be the maximum rates that you would need to, to, to notice in order to qualify for SRF funding and, and be eligible for those, those grants. So how, how do these rates and the different scenarios compare to your neighbors? Currently, you're, you're a little bit below average. Your, in the first year, your rates would move to be about average or a little on the high end of average, depending on which scenario we're looking at. However, by the end, your rates would likely be near the high end or, or at the high end of, of this survey. However, everyone's rates have been generally increasing. I think Patterson is in the middle of the five-year rate increase. Modesto and I believe Oakdale as well. Another thing to point out is, you know, every system has a, is a different point in its life cycle with its treatment plant. Houston had to replace its treatment plant in two thousand and eight and has been at the high end of the survey ever since they had that replaced their treatment plant. So it's kind of a, you know, it's not apples to apples. It's important to note that, you know, as, you know, as, when you have to replace a large treatment plant, which is the largest part of your infrastructure, your rates are going to be higher. And then over time, your rates will move back to the middle and other agencies will have to replace their treatment plant. And, and the, the life cycle of, of will continue. So, so to, to wrap it up with recommendations, we, we recommend for this five-year period, maintain your current rate structure. We reviewed the assumptions and we, we feel that they, they're still defensible and they still reflect the, they're still proportion, your rates are still proportionate to the benefit provided and comply with Prop 218. We recommend that the council, for whichever scenario is chosen, mail out, i- if you choose to go with the scenario to mail out, Prop 218, to authorize the mailing of Prop 218 notices for the, the maximum rate scenario, which we identified in order to qualify for the SRF loans and grant funding. Also, prior, if, if you do go that route, prior to implementing the final two years of the Prop 218 notice rates or final three years even, we would strongly recommend reviewing your, the financial assumptions. You know, how many, how, what has the city received in grants? How much new growth has, has occurred? How much connection fee revenue has come in? And then what are the more refined water treatment plant costs? And, and also what are the, what are the financing terms that the city will ultimately have? One final recommendation is just that the city update the wastewater treatment plant connection fees. And I believe they're already, that's already underway and we're engaged to do, do that. But to eventually have the council consider implementing updated connection fees to reflect the water treatment capacity and to have growth pay for its, its share of, of the project. So, so the next step, if this, if the council does decide to go forward with mailing out Prop 218 notices, the next steps of, of this would be to, to mail out the notices, have the, the forty-five day notice period. So it would likely be the months of October and November and then hold a, a public hearing, probably looking at your council calendar, December thirteenth would be the likely date for that. And then the first rates, if, if, if the, there's not a successful protest and the council does adopt, adopt rates, the, the first noticed rates would be effective in January. So with that, I'll turn it back to Marcella and open it up for questions and discussion. And also I, I apologize, I, it wouldn't let me turn on my camera. So that's why my camera is not on. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, for that. So Mayor and Council, the discussion tonight is seeking your authorization to proceed with that Proposition 218 notification to our residents. So the feedback we're looking from you today is which scenario would be your preferred option for us to notice those rates at? And number two, would you authorize us to go ahead and proceed then with that notification period? Looking towards a December thirteenth public hearing for all of our residents to be able to submit protest votes should they desire? And then look to implement those maximum rates on January first.
Okay, I'd like to have public input first before we do our discussion. So anyone from the public wishing to speak? Is there anyone on Zoom?
We have someone there. Hi, can you please state your name and give your comment?
Yeah, my name is Ellen Halbert. Hello?
We can hear you.
It's not working. Hello?
Evelyn, we can hear you. Please state your comment.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Evelyn.
Hello? I'm getting an echo.
Uh, we would probably need you to turn or to mute your PC if you have one. It looks like you're currently calling via phone.
Everything is off. Okay, I'll try it above the echo and see if you can hear me. Okay. On these scenarios, when, when you say that it's going to be a hundred and twenty-three dollars, you're talking about one month. And since our regular bill is a two-month bill, that means it will go from ninety-eight dollars to two hundred and forty-six dollars each billing cycle?
At the end of the fifth year, that would be the proposal.
Right, it'll keep going up to that much, right. The second proposal of the phase one. So it's less, if you use the phase one for phase one, after phase one and you need the rest of the money, do you go back out for another rate increase for phase two? Do you just increase it as you need? Do you go back to 218? Rate increase, how do you get the money for the second phase?
Evelyn, if you want to state all your comments, we can respond at the end of your statements.
Okay. I'm also wondering why there is nothing in here raising industrial? Because they are also using a large part of that sewer, sewer, sewer system, like the one downtown, the cannabis manufacturing and cultivation one, a hundred, twenty-five thousand gallons every day when they start up and they plan on putting a whole lot of toxic stuff in there. So I'm wondering why they don't have any increase in this thing? The developers that are needing this new growth, they don't have any, none of that's been looked at. And the farmers need to pay for the recycle also. I'm done.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Right, I'll bring it back. On the phasing, it's all in the plan. If we go to a second phase, it's not going to be additional 218 process. Connection, well, you, you were talking about industrial. Industrial does have an increase. But if there are large use, I think you're correct. We probably should take a look at that. But for the 218 process, do we have an industrial differences? We have commercial.
We have commercial that's built into the rate study. The industrial rate is set by ordinance and is something that we can evaluate.
Right, as we move forward. And so I believe that, that takes care of your two items. One of the items are, we're firming up a connection fee, I believe we are, for new construction to pay their fair share. However, that's not part of our funding scheme as they pay, as we get more connections, that will be lowering the overall cost spread out across the, the board. At the same time, as we secure increase in funding from different sources, that will also decrease the amount. We gave you a maximum of forty million dollars maximum, but it could go higher than that. So the overall cost will be down. And as stated in the presentation, that we will have to identify and evaluate our financial assumptions as we move forward and most likely in, on a yearly basis. So with that, for the council, you have any comments?
No comments.
No comments that I would add. If we're looking at the scenarios, I'm still for the phased approach. And I would be comfortable proceeding with the two eighteen process.
So that would be scenario two, correct?
Yes, scenario two.
I have a concern about the increase in the cost. I know that we have a lot of people. Who are on fixed income. And maybe we need to look at our programs that we have for those that need assistance in paying their bills. And the two eighteen process, I hope that whatever we send out is understandable, it's clear. People, you know, can have the opportunity to ask questions if they don't understand it and. I think also, I think. If I'm remembering correctly and understanding that that we can go back and look at our rates and. Change them if we need to, and I want to make sure that we have that opportunity and I'm hold everybody to that. That's what we need to do.
That's what I would recommend is, as was mentioned by Eric. We would look at setting the maximum rate, and that's what we would notice to our residents. But as we. Secure grant funding, as we secure hopefully low interest loans. As we look at the funding that's going to come in from connection fees. And in the future, possible funding from the sale of the recycled water that we would revisit this rate study. Reevaluate those financial projections and adjust from there.
Thank you.
Should be on a yearly basis.
Yes.
So in in conjunction with what Darlene was talking about, who is preparing the the notice?
So that's going to be a combination of the consultant and city staff.
Okay.
The notice will go out in both English and Spanish.
But I I would like to make sure we have a cushion so there is no error when it comes to December thirteenth.
So the goal of bringing this item to you today is to be able to receive that authorization to proceed. Because we do have to have notices in the residence hands no later than October thirty first. That would not be my goal. My goal would be to have it in their hands at least a week or two prior to that. So there's no issue.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with the option to the phase in.
I am almost thinking to do the maximum amount with phase one. But pending us reconsidering, you know, through December. And with. Those different scenarios to support those rate increases.
I go along with Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember Rivi with the phase two.
For the for the phasing. That's a more drawn out, but if funding becomes available, you know, we go for the maximum. I agree that. The maximum will give us more funding opportunities. But that is not guaranteed. And it would be more competitive, and we don't know what the monies. Are going to be available after two thousand twenty three. So I would. Suggest that we do the phasing. So I'll make a motion that we do. The take the phasing approach, option two, and commence the two eighteen process to have it completed. By December thirteenth, twenty twenty two.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Yes, he can. They were simultaneous.
Just blend the names.
Okay, I'll give it to Vice Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Odiva.
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yes.
Councilmember Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, and this is. I wish we were here five years ago. It would have been a lot easier process, but. Government takes a long time. And I wish Jill was able to get it to where we are today, but was not able to. With that, we're going to move on to the local redevelopment authority, item eleven point three. Riverbank Industrial Complex Resolution authorizing amendments to lease. Disposition and development agreement with Amedis Property Riverbank, Inc. To include parcels two and two A.
So Mayor and Council, the item before you is looking to do an amendment of the original agreement that was signed and agreed upon. With Amedis as the master developer of the local redevelopment agency and our Riverbank Industrial Complex. The agreement itself stipulated that they would take over the management and maintenance of. Parcel A or what we would consider the main parcel, as well as the stormwater ponds as they are linked. Through the development and through working with the staff out at the LRA and with Amedis. We quickly realized that eventually parcels two and two A would be transferred over to Amedis. Through a purchase and sales agreement that was already agreed upon as part of that original lease agreement. So we decided through conversations that it would make sense that Amedis took over the. Maintenance and management of those two parcels at this point in time. So that they have full site control over those areas. If there's any questions, I'm available to respond on behalf of staff. We also have Jared Hollis from Amedis. Who is here to respond to any questions you may have of him.
Are there any questions? Now, the transfer to and to will not happen until we have the. The deed that we can transfer to them, but this is for the management as.
Yes, correct. Same as the other two parcels, the main site. We currently don't have control of those yet. But once they do transfer to the city, we would immediately turn around and transfer to Amedis.
Are there any questions?
No questions for me.
Are there any questions from the public?
Mayor, there's no one wishing to speak.
All right, I bring it back for the council consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item eleven point three, as is.
A second.
What motion to approve in a second on item eleven three? Roll call, please.
Member Odiva.
Yes.
Board Member Hernandez.
Yes.
Member Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Yes.
Chair O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Staff comments.
So the third component of the regional recycled water project that the city and the consultants have been working on is. The environmental review of the project itself. It's another component that needs to be submitted as part of the financial package. So I did want to notify members of the public that the initial study. For the proposed mitigation negative declaration that has been prepared. For this project is available for review and public comment on our website. WWW dot riverbank dot org. It is available from our homepage. And we are accepting comments through October twentieth at five o'clock P M. Those comments can be sent to Michael Rydel, our Public Works Director at M Rydel at riverbank dot org. And second, of course, I want to invite all of the citizens and other members of the public to our forty fifth annual Cheese and Wine Festival. Which is going to occur on October eighth and ninth here on Santa Fe Avenue in downtown Riverbank. And that is all from staff.
Thank you. Councilmember Hernandez, please.
Um, I guess I just want to thank Norma again for accepting the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation, and I am so sorry I missed it, but. The I was able to catch the dancers outside. They looked beautiful.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivi.
Thank you, Mayor. So I had I had an opportunity to attend a meeting about a discussion over Operation Forgotten Valor. Which surrounded honorably discharged screen card veterans that were deported for minor offenses. There were several agencies, several reps in attendance at this meeting, and so I'll be working with Josh Harder's rep. To kind of draft a resolution in support of real solutions. So I'm kind of asking anybody who's interested in kind of helping helping these efforts to write your legislators. There's two bills in the House, H R six and H R eleven eighty two. That's kind of kind of worked towards fixing this problem, fixing our immigration. System and also looking forward to cheese and wine, looking forward to volunteering for several of the nonprofits and seeing everybody out there. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Barbara Martinez.
I attended the Shaw meet meeting, which is Stanislav's Homeless Alliance, and the committee listened to a presentation about plans. That we have for housing the homeless in Riverbank that was given by our city manager. And I was very proud to be a part of that and let the public know what we're doing. We're on top of everything or trying to be anyway. And a reminder that if you have a street light that's out or any issues for like roads, etc., you can. Use our go to our city website to report it so it can be fixed right away. Let's see, and October is National Month for Walk the School Day and Awareness of Safe Routes to School. And more information about that will be coming to our next city council meeting. And also I'm looking forward to our cheese and wine event. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I would just like to remind everybody that we are still in a drought situation, and any water that we waste in our city doesn't do us any good. And so we still need to conserve. Likewise. I think there's going to be a bill that's going to be voted on about sending water south. We need to keep central and Northern California water. Up here because we are growing and we can't afford to send it to the south. So take a look at that bill, please. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of us attended the countryside park opening, and that was very good. However, it highlighted some of the issues that we have. We have regulations for park behavior such as. No smoking, no smoking marijuana throughout the city. Yet it's being done. A lot of citizens complained, not only there. But some of the other parks, we have to take a look at. Items that we are saying we're going to control, but don't have the teeth to control it. Whether that is hiring an additional. Individuals to monitor the parks, whether it's a park ranger or however they we want to do it, but it's not right. For kids smoking. In in the play equipment. That happened at countryside. And I I'm disappointed that that happens, but. That's prevalent through prevalent throughout the the city park areas. At the same time, we have other regulations restricting encroachment onto our easements. But you can see that there's still continued building. Go down. Squire Wells and you can see some really nice new encroachments out there, but we're not doing anything about it. We have to stop it before they they complete their projects, and I like to see that going on. With that, we move into closed session. Consistent of item thirteen point one Conference of property negotiators pursuant to government code section five four nine five six. Point eight property A P N one thirty two dash zero one zero dash zero six two sixty eight thirteen third street. And A P N one thirty two dash zero one zero dash zero one four sixty eight twenty five third street, agency negotiator. City manager, property negotiator. The Patels under negotiation price terms and payment. Anyone wishing to make a comment on closed session items? You have three minutes before we adjourn. Do you know a public comment? Yes? Depends on how long it it can be, you know, five minutes. It could be a half hour depending on the discussion. That's what usually happens during closed session. But we'll try to be quick. I always try to be quick. With that, we are adjourned to closed session. Ready? The City Council LRA Board reconvenes on September 27th, 2022 with item 14.1, Report from Closed Session on Item 13.1, Conference Bill Property Negotiators Direction Has Been Provided to Staff. Our next meeting will be on October 11th at 6:00 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.